Comments or questions from visitors? Right now, we have four members signed up. I know tonight we move our meeting forward because we have several board members that were going to be attending the homecoming events. I would propose either the board members feel like we've got 20 minutes for this and that should get us through our agenda, because it's important to get through our work, that we continue with that, or another option would be to maybe amend it to three minutes or move the comments to the end. Is there any thoughts about that? Should we continue as is with the board members signed up to speak?
I think the process is finally, yeah, 20 minutes is fair.
Yeah, okay. Very good. So at this point, again, we have four members signed up to comment. I would just like to remind people that comments that are confidential or personal nature are not appropriate, especially personnel or again, private matters. And I would encourage people, if you have comments of specific individual type nature, that you try to reach out to administration to address those items through that process prior to coming to the board meeting to share those comments here. At this point, then, let's get our comments started. We have Mary Belkamp from Kimball.
Mr. Superintendent, please report. Uh, this is the sun, hope you can hear me. My name is Mary Belkamp. My wife and I have two children in the report at elementary, and one of those schools has moved to the district this year. And I'm happy to say we've hardly been happier with the transition so far, so it's been a wonderful experience. I have a few comments regarding Agenda 86D tonight, helping safety measures for 2021 and '22, specifically the part where it says the school district will not require masks unless directed by a specific authority of the school. In short, I'm going to ask tonight that you use that specific authority and enact a masking requirement for the Republic Report Public School District buildings. Just a couple of points to that. Pandemic surge and proceeded is currently surging here. We know that regional hospitals are under strain, and I just actually had the fortune of finding out that my daughter hasn't reported exposure now from a few days ago. And we've been hearing just some friends and contacts that have said that some families are sending their kids to school even when they are COVID exposed, so we have some concerns there. But the thing is, as we know, the population that are in these buildings are very likely vaccinated in terms of 12 years of health. They're a minority, the ones that are vaccinated. And in the elementary schools, nobody's vaccinated at all because of the requirements. So basically, what we have is, and also in a community that doesn't have a lot of vaccination, we have a wonderful opportunity for COVID transmission in the public school district buildings. And to the extent that this disease continues to spread, of course, there are all the public health risks within the community. And so, I guess, you know, from motivation standpoint, I know when all of you are going to be elected members of the board here and to make critical decisions regarding our kids' education, I'm guessing many, maybe even all of you, didn't expect that your decisions would be impacting, you know, the public health of the community because of the whole pandemic and how it impacts central districts coming. And I'm also guessing you didn't see these positions of public trust, having contemplated the frustration and anger and, you know, high emotions that surround the issue. But, as you well know, your power to influence events extends to the public health of our school district, and it also extends to the economic health of our communities. So again, I ask that you exercise your authority to require masks. And I know if you do that, I fully understand, that you will face sincere, if I would suggest, this guy anger from many families, and probably from some staff. You might be accused of being tiresome, you might be accused of being noose, you might be accused of being fear mongers, or all sorts of other nasty things, because people struggle on social media sometimes. You'll also be accused of having various motivations that I'm almost certain are completely untrue, probably by people that you know better. But more importantly, you will protect the health of students and staff, you will materially reduce the risk of COVID transmission just by virtue of the huge number of kids congregating these buildings every day, you will reduce days of education lost to COVID exposure and illness, and you'll make a decision that's honestly in the best interest of the people who elected you, as well as the children who not have a vote on matters of civic leadership or policy issues. And I understand the profound value of liberty and personal choice in a free society like ours. I'm not here to doubt the sincerity of the people that make those arguments against masking, but I would argue that those notions are misused when they're applied to arguing against masking mandates in a way that harms all of us, directly or indirectly. In this case, regarding mask mandates, I believe that public health considerations basically sound and settled science. Are your best guy consider the issue and ultimately require masks and reduce the spread of COVID in these buildings? I can thank you for your consideration of this very difficult matter, and I appreciate your time.
Next, we have Becky Leece from Hope.
Hi, I know many of Becky Leece's, I have four children who are ages 12 and under and all attend schools in this district. Every year for decades, schools across Minnesota have kept their children at home to protect their physical wellbeing. It's been doing this for a long time. Schools have children stay at home if they're at risk. There's a risk of void of school could be potentially harmful to them. Now, the threat I'm referring to is winter weather conditions. Sometimes schools make decisions to close schools, to send kids home early, to start school late, when there's a threat to their physical wellbeing. It's not a new idea to keep kids at home, to keep them physically safe. And what I'm asking this board to do is to give Mr. Covington that power to make decisions about how to best keep our kids safe in the face of an ongoing threat of a pandemic. Sometimes it's wearing a mask, sometimes it's proper quarantines following an exposure, sometimes that's testing on a daily basis after an exposure, and sometimes that means being sent home, or a combination of all of those. But I believe that our superintendent needs to have the ability to make nimble decisions so that we can keep kids in the building as much as possible. What I'm asking the school to do tonight is to initially tie their masking policy to the transmission rate in our district. As you're aware, the transmission rate according to the J. Wolfson scale is in the high transmission zone. Cases are higher than they were at the start of last fall. And without some mitigation measures in place, such as masking or proper quarantines, students and the families who don't want to get COVID are going to end up contracting COVID. So I would like to first ask that masking go into place and tied to that metric. And it doesn't have to be district-wide masking for the whole year. I'm asking to do it on a temporary basis, tied to the local transmission rate, and maybe even just do it for eight weeks until the parents who want to have their children vaccinated that are under 12 will get that chance to get both doses in. We know that's coming around October 31st. Around Halloween, students can start getting that vaccine, and by Christmas time, some students who are 12 and others can be fully vaccinated. Let's just do a masking policy, if not put up whole districts, at least for the elementary schools. Now, I understand that there's competing interests represented in this room, and sometimes policy decisions go one way, and then the next decision has to go the other way. We have to be flexible in understanding of each other. Although I believe the scientific data says masking is the best policy, I also think that if the first inclination of this board is to not require masking, then the secondary policy that I'm asking you to institute is one of very strict quarantines, so that those who feel that once a policy decision goes this way, the next policy decision favors those who are most cautious. And that would be, of course, once there's a close contact exposure, then we've actually quarantined like we did last year. So in the elementary school setting, those kids would be sent home, and I think that's a bad result. I think preemptive masking would avoid that whole problem, but if you're not inclined to do that, then I ask that we send kids home, send them for five days, get that test. If parents don't want to test, then their kids can stay home for longer. And I understand parents made that choice last year already, and they want to get that testing, came back. But when you send a whole classroom home at one time, then the teacher can focus on a little bit of distance learning for those three or four days, that those kids are all at home, and then once testing rolls out for them after the fifth day post-exposure, then they can come back. And then that policy favors families who want to be safe. It's predictable, it's efficient, it reduces the number of missed in-person days compared to just letting secondary and tertiary spread go through the classroom. And I think it's a better policy decision than just relying on our reset mitigation strategy, a strategy that might be later, if we don't have any masking in place. So to the extent that section 6D of the health and safety procedures that are being set forward for you tonight, I ask you to allow those to go forward, but with a caveat that Mr. Covington can allow masking to occur in temporary and short-term basis for students as needed to help mitigate the effects of a close contact exposure. So once again, I think masking should be the first policy. I think it keeps kids in the classroom. And then secondarily, if that's not the choice of the board, you need to have really strong quarantine protocol. And we shouldn't allow kids that have been exposed to just walk back into the school, high school, middle school, or elementary school without a mask on. We can do better than that. Thanks.
Shantel from State of the Valley. First of all, I just wanted to, we should have been masking all along, looking at numbers, looking at transmission rates, like mentioned before. It's something that shouldn't have been done. But main purpose for the night, make a COVID response that makes sense. When you have all these plans for how you're in the distance learning, or you're going to scalp one at it or whatever, okay, that's fine. But when you send out an exposure email that has an option to do nothing, are you really doing anything? Like, I understand why you have parents' choices. Choices are great. As a parent, I love choices. But sometimes the choices that are best for our kids and our family are depressed for the district. You know, some people think maybe their kids shouldn't have to wear pants to school, or they should be able to go v-necking across the room. I mean, we have rules and things that don't allow them to do that. Sometimes you, your job as a board and as a superintendent is to make sure this district is running smoothly. And when you have a high transmission rate, you're facing potential distance learning, you should be doing everything in your power to prevent that. One way you do that is masking, and as mentioned earlier, good quarantining, or at least not giving the option to do nothing. Even if you get something like head lice, you're advised to be home. Why is this any different? There's way more consequences than head lice, much less obnoxious in some ways. All of them have like greater consequences. Um, then that's all that fits.
And then we have Tina Barak from Hope.
Hi, I'm Tina, and I just want to reiterate what Becky said. I agree with everything she kind of covered, most of what I was going to talk about on the masking side of things. So I just want to comment on the updated policies that we're, you're introducing tonight and later in the agenda for bullying. And I saw that there basically weren't any changes to that policy, and that's really disappointing with all the work that you guys have been doing on equity and bullying issues here in the district. I personally, and I know several others that would agree, would like to see more stringent and more strict consequences, not leave it up to the administrators as to what the consequences will be of bullying. It has not worked in the past, and we heard many over the I believe we need stricter policies consequences are. And that's my ask of you. Thank you.
All right, that is it for the comments that people had signed up for tonight, so thank you for the comments. Appreciate it. And at this point, now, we will continue on with our business. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Kara. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to action, item 6A. We have the audit report. We have our audit firm here to give us a detailed analysis. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Knowles of Bergen PDE. Tonight, I'm going to be going over a summary of the results of our audit, as well as looking at the financial results for 2021. And you guys should have gotten a printout of the PowerPoint as well. All of you, do you know how to work this better than me?
It's a notion, boy, you can't.
It's just like you turn it off right away. Are you okay? I was trying to just give it, just like that. If you could be louder for a couple minutes, I'd be like, "Oh, that would be great." If you turn it on and let stuff like this go. That is a big right hand suggestion. Don't give it to me, the number. I'd say let's give it, because they want to get one tonight, so. You have to be right.
So let's get closer down to the
The financial statements will be on the website. Okay, the main purpose of our audit is to provide our independent audit reports. And in that report, we state that we believe that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the district on June 30 of 2021, and all of the activity that occurred within the year. And we're offering an unmodified opinion, otherwise public opinion, and it's the best that we're able to provide. On slide number three, we also offer a number of other reports or communications. That we issued the first one report in accordance with government auditing standards is a required document because of the state federal funding that's provided to the district. We take a closer look at internal controls and compliance, allows grants, contracts, regulations. We didn't have any compliance findings. We didn't have one internal control finding. Might sound familiar to many, and due to lack of segregation of accounting duties because of the small staff needed to handle the duties for the district, so there is some overlap with one person handling multiple steps in the transaction process. We also issued a report on compliance of federal programs. So because of the amount of federal funding received, we were required to test that coronavirus relief fund and the education stabilization funds this year. No findings on either of those programs, and complete and independent there as well. We also issued a report on Minnesota legal compliance, compliance of certain state statutes as required by the Office of the State Auditor. There was one finding that you will see in the large financial statement booklet, but it was correct in 2021, so I would actually say that there were no legal compliance findings this year. And the last document that we issued called the communications letter, this separate document, we provide required communication to the school board. We also talk about upcoming changes from IVE in the federal government. And then finally, there is a financial analysis section, which we'll look at next. So first, we'll take a look at the basic formula allowance. This is the basic amount received per student served in the district. And for 2021, that amount was $6,567, and that's a 2% increase from the prior year. And then we have a couple slides where we look at student counts, looking at residents, public students, regardless of which public school they are attending. The resident student count was down about 66 in 2021. And that same information is on the next slide, so you can see in 2021, that was the lowest of the last five years for residents. And then on slide number seven, our first table shows the weighting factors from them. They've been the same the last five years. Now, basically, what this means is you get a little bit more money for those secondary students, because they're weighted a little bit higher. And then applying those weighting factors and the effects of COVID involvement, you get your people units served, which is kind of the middle table. And those were up slightly in 2021 because of the COVID involvement, because more than covered the decline in residents. And then that last slide is EMDs served, and that is going to correlate with the people units served, it just excludes the weighting factors. And the next slide shows the students served in the district, so you can see in 2021, the highest year of total students served over the last five years. And the last graph on slide number nine, looking at student counts, just looks at the change over the last five years. So a 3.6% decline in residents, but a relatively flat or stable number of EMDs served. And then moving on to the actual dollar amounts for the years. So first up, we have general fund revenue. You can see the impact of that 2% increase in the formula allowance, and also the slight increase in the weighted students served, having an impact on the state revenue. It was up about $1 million in 2021. Also included in that $1 million was an increase in state special ed entitlement as well. And then other revenues were also up about $1 million, and that is primarily federal funding, the coronavirus relief funds, and the education stabilization funds. Here's a graph form on the next slide of that same information, so you can see about a $2 million increase in revenue overall in 2021. And then we can provide some comparative information on revenues. So looking at revenues per student served in the district, and then we have some statewide and similar-sized district averages as well. So Recore's revenue per student served on the bottom table, in the bottom section of this table, increased in line with the revenue increase. Recore's revenue per student served has historically been below the statewide average, and a little bit below the averages for similar-sized districts as well, and a little bit closer to the spending for similar-sized districts. And then the next slide looks at expenditures per student, which we see a similar picture here. The district's expenditures per student increased in 2021 due to an increase in expenditures, but again, historically below statewide averages, the averages for similar-sized districts over the last couple of years. Then looking at the district's spending allocation, over the last couple of years, we have a couple of pie charts. You can see that the spending allocation has been pretty consistent. There's one more notable change, that was in instructional support services, up from 7% to 13% in 2021. And that was primarily due to the purchase of math books through capital leases, as well as the spending of the coronavirus relief funds and the education stabilization funds in 2021. The next slide, we look at budget to actual results. The first column is the original budget approved by the board, and then the second column is the final budget, or the recommended budget that was approved. And the biggest change between those two columns is going to be budgeting for the receipt and spending of those additional federal funds. And then looking at the actual amounts compared to the final budget, we have the variance column. You can see revenues came in over budget, about 1% in total, and that was primarily due to conservative budgeting for state special education aid. And if you look at the total expenditure line, it looks like total expenditures exceeded the budget by about $816,000, but you have to factor in proceeds from capital leases, which is the fourth line from the bottom. So the math books and the ICAST that were acquired through capital lease was not budgeted, there's no fund balance effect. So when you take that out, expenditures were actually under budget, about $800,000. And that was primarily in regular instruction due to wages and salaries coming in under budget, related to substitute costs, summer school programs, curriculum costs were under budget and set aside to be spent in future years. Extracurricular activities were also under budget, just the fewer activities going on with the pandemic. So kind of a lot going on with this table, but if you look at the bottom line, you can see that the district's final budget was for fund balance to go up about $333,000. It actually went up about $1.47 million. The next slide is a nice summary of what happened in the general fund, the general fund activity over the last five years. As discussed early, the revenue was up about $2 million, or about 7.4%. Expenditures were up about 6%, primarily due to salary benefit increases. There was also an additional FTEs added in 2021. So as I mentioned earlier, fund balance up almost 1.5 million in total. About $650,000 of that increase was in the unassigned fund balance category, which is available for spending on any purpose. The unassigned fund balance of $2,155,399, that's the second line from the bottom, that's 7.7% of the annual operating budget. And the district's policy sets a target goal of 6% to 8%, so right in line with the policy. The next slide is another way of looking at fund balance percentages. This is a special calculation that the Minnesota Department of Education does. It's unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures, and this way we can compare the district to other districts. So compared to the most recently available averages from the Department of Education, the district has been below the statewide averages, but did report an increase up to 14.2% for 2021. And then we'll move on to the food service fund. See revenues up quite significantly in 2021. Expenditures, a smaller increase, up about $23,000. All the meals served in the district were federally deemed first in 2021, resulting in that big jump in revenue this year. On the next slide, we look at the number of meals for mothers serving in the district, and we see a decrease again in 2021, which I don't think is providing, all of the meals served were considered part of the summer food service program due to the pandemic. And then finally, we have the community service fund. And both revenues and expenditures were up. In 2021, $30,000 of the coronavirus relief funds were received and spent in the community service fund in 2021. the community service fund in 2021. There was also a transfer in from the general fund of about $11,000 to cover the deficit in the school readiness program. So fund balance ended the year at $35,458. And that concludes what I have prepared for the audit presentation. If anyone has any questions that we have to answer.
Any comments, questions? I just would like to make a comment that to get to the 7.7%, I think is a goal that we've been working on for a long time to get about 6%. So kudos to everyone, the whole situation and how we got to that, because that's going to set our district up to be successful going forward, having that fund balance and that 6% to 8% increase, which is a wonderful thing to have going on for us. I'd spend years, I can't, how many years has it been since we've been below 6%?
At least seven, if not before my time.
Yeah.
So it's been a good goal that we've really tried to work towards. So I'm just excited to see that number. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to motion accept the audit presented?
You usually do, but technically you don't have to accept it. It is what it is.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
Motion by Sunny to accept the audit.
Second.
Second by Kara. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the audit results are accepted as presented. Item 6C, approve preliminary levy. You want to talk about that?
Okay, thanks. And all of the graphs that January was going through, even though we could get the presentation started, the communications letter is attached in the board packet. So if you go online on the letter of board meeting, you can see all of the graphs. I just wanted everyone to know if you find me if you're interested. So some preliminary levy, the levy we certify in two steps. First, we do the preliminary in September. We do a final amount in December. So the preliminary levy, we always say we levy at the maximum. Essentially, what this means that if MTE is going to make any changes for us, they could change it between now and December. And if you put a dollar limit on it right now, we wouldn't be able to capture any of those changes. We essentially say, yep, we're going to do the maximum. And then in December, it will be final amounts. And the preliminary levy is about a $259,000 decrease from last year, about 3.8%. We have a bond issuance making the last payment on here in February, and so we don't need to levy for that anymore. So that is the reason we're having a nice decrease for this year.
So does that from the bottom line impact on covering taxes?
Yeah, the amount that people will see as levy from the school district should decrease unless you see a really big increase in the value of your own home that might mitigate that. But hopefully, I would see decreases across the board for our taxpayers for the school portion. Have to remember, your taxes are made up of the county, the city, and the school district. So while our part might go down, the city or counties, which are completely separate from ours, will go up.
Great, thanks. And I just want to point out that this is just a administrative standard process that we do every year. And any conversation that would be meaningful would happen in December. So I move to accept the, oh, I'm sorry, if I don't write language. I move to approve the preliminary levy.
Kara, motion to approve the preliminary levy to the maximum. Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the levy is approved. Item 6C, district education facility paraprofessional.
I'm here tonight. You see a consideration for a paraprofessional position. Typically, we ask for two meetings on additions to our staff. However, I'm asking for a levy tonight because this paraprofessional will help us bridge a gap. We have a preschooler, which is somebody who can speak both languages, both Spanish and English, because we are starting to see some of our Spanish-speaking kiddos come to us at three and four. That is something that we've been wanting and hoping for, for a long time. And so this position is needed in order to help us bridge that language gap. This is an important position for our kids and our families and the community. So I would urge that we pass this.
I'll make a motion to approve any position as presented.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the paraprofessional position is approved. Item 6D, health and safety measures for the 2021-22 school year. So I have a few comments before we discuss this that I prepared. So I'd just like to share them now. As I've heard from many individuals over the past months regarding Recore's masking COVID plan, I've worked hard to listen and learn. And tonight, I ask for the same consideration from the board and the community as I share my thoughts and concerns about our current plan and mitigation options going forward. Recore's safety return plan was developed and adopted in June when the COVID situation was different and the governance state of emergency was in place. Since that time, the Delta variant has emerged, and recommendations from our federal, state, and local health officials have also changed. Recore has continued to follow the adopted plan, which includes recommendations but not mandates. As I see it, a game plan was developed, but now the game has changed. We need to adapt along with it or risk losing the game. Dr. Gregory Poland from Mayo Clinic recently stated that the Delta variant is 50 to 60% more contagious than the Alpha variant, contributing to the recent surge in cases. According to Minnesota Department of Health, as September 23rd, the largest number of new cases of COVID is in the 10 to 19-year-old group. Last Tuesday, I spoke with Dr. George Morris, Center for Care's Vice President, and also the Director for their COVID, addressing COVID. And St. Cloud Hospital has experienced a volume of at least 50 or more patients with COVID for the past month. 90% of them are unvaccinated. Dr. Morris stated that this volume of COVID patients is putting the ICU at or above capacity. As a direct result of the higher COVID patient volume, there has been stricter restrictions on visitors, and some procedures are being limited. He also stated that there are pediatric patients being admitted with COVID, one of which required transferring to Minneapolis. And lastly, the transmission rate for the Recore community has been trending up, and the latest numbers of the 14-day case rate was 71.1 per 10,000, which is considered a high transmission. Personally, as a physical therapist at St. Cloud Hospital, I have worked with many COVID patients over the last 18 months, including patients in the ICU, patients on ventilators, and patients who didn't make it. This has been the most challenging work of my career, and on top of this, I'm critically facing what I can only hope that is the most challenging work that I will do on the school board. It has become difficult for me to experience the reality of COVID during the day and not speak up for stronger mitigation strategies in the evening. We all want the same thing, healthy kids, we're able to come to school every day, go home to healthy families, and for this pandemic to be over. But are we willing to implement the recommendations from our federal, state, local healthcare experts to accomplish this goal? I'm genuinely concerned and curious how COVID mitigation recommendations from experts at Minnesota Department of Health, multiple physician professional groups, center care, and our old world renowned Mayo Clinic are not given more respect. So going forward, what can Recore do to keep our kids in school and manage the spread of COVID and support our local healthcare organizations? I personally think that we can and should do more than the current plan states. And as Mr. Kelvin will note later on in our discussion, the consideration of plan changes is not unique to Recore. Many other local districts are looking at making changes to their plans to the spread of COVID, due to the spread of COVID. And Dr. Morris states that one way to improve the safety of our patients, students, employees, and community members includes a layered approach of vaccinations for all eligible people, masks for indoor spaces, and even outdoors when spacing and distancing can't be maintained, staying home in the long quarantine for symptoms or positive cases, quarantine for unproductive exposures, test for limits, test for symptoms or exposures, limit unnecessary exposures. So tonight, the board has an opportunity to discuss and address the concerns of the Recore community and use this layered approach as a guidance. I've heard from community members supporting mandatory masks at school, especially for children under age 12. I've also heard numerous concerns about the lack of mandatory quarantining for unvaccinated individuals after known exposure. But I also acknowledge that there are community members that feel very differently. So as we continue our discussion tonight, I would like us to seriously consider implementing strategies more aligned with current health recommendations, specifically masks at the elementary level and tighter quarantine guidelines. Let's work together to propose some options to help achieve the goal of ending COVID. Thank you. This is not anything to clap about. We have all suffered lots of loss, many in different ways. We shouldn't have to be in this situation to even have this discussion. And I know this meets some people's needs and doesn't meet other people's needs, but we need to come together as a group and find some common middle ground to get to the solution of keeping our kids in school and ending this COVID pandemic. So the only way we can do this is to get as many people on board as possible. By us against them, instead of us together, you're not going to get to where we need to be. So although I acknowledge that, I just want, I just, it doesn't feel good to be celebrating a lot of loss for people in many different ways. So, thank you.
Jason, while I respect everything that you've said, and I respect your opinion, I think for me, our role as school board members is to represent the majority of our constituents. And so when I am out in our communities, whether it's at the grocery store, at church, at events, whether school events, community events, I'm observing the behaviors, and the behaviors indicate that the majority of our constituents don't want to be forced to mask. And that's my job. My job is to represent the majority of them. And so while I understand what you're saying, and while I appreciate what you're saying, I've got to stick by what I believe is my role as a school board member, and that's to do and to represent the majority of our constituents. And so I still support our decision to, you know, masks are optional. Those who want to wear them can wear them. I think that if there's a federal or state mandate that requires us to mandate masks, then we would abide by that. I would go as far as saying that if there is a state or federal requirement which would force us to make a significant change to our current in-person learning model, I would want us as a board to discuss that again. But side of those two things, I'm kind of at the point where I don't want to keep bringing this up. There's no clarity for our parents if every meeting we rehash and rehash and rehash. So I would propose that the language in the face covering section, if the sentence that there that's proposed says the school district will not require masks unless directed by specific authority of the school board or by state or federal mandate, I would propose that we add a little clarity to that that suggests that the school board would meet and discuss masking in the event of a state or federal requirement which would force us to make significant changes to our in-person learning model. That at least gives our parents some idea and some clarity that short of a situation that would force us to make changes, we're going to abide by the mask optional.
So I respect your position too, but I hope you are acknowledging that there are people that have sent communications to us that are here tonight that have also said that we mask.
Absolutely. I am acknowledging that. I am. But I'm acknowledging that everywhere that I go, the majority doesn't model that behavior.
So please, work on that meeting. So I appreciate that, but please.
I do also want to say that we've said in several meetings, and maybe not more recently, that, you know, masks are optional, and that means everyone has the right to wear them or not wear them without any sort of shaming. And I think that's important, that everybody understands that if you make the choice to wear it, that's your choice. If you make the choice not to wear it, that's your choice. And I feel like there's a lot of shaming on both sides. And I'm sick of that piece, too.
I would agree. I think we can get to some clarity if we try to maybe put some parameters. My concern is that we've got increasing rates and we're not changing as the rates are increasing. So I would look forward to say, if you were a coach that had a game plan, and now the game is changing, and you're a coach and you said, I'm sticking with the game plan, would that be, and you potentially could lose, or it could get worse, is that a good coach or is that a bad coach? What I'm asking is that we look at the data of what is happening in our district and the events that are happening, and seeing if we can try to find, like if it's 3% rate, there's talk about what the rate per 10,000, weight rate per 10,000, some kind of data point that at this point, we would look at masking. And if the board is not in a position to do masking, because you were saying, the community is not for masking, then I would say that we need to look at quarantine and see and follow that because we can't have increasing numbers in the district and just let nothing, nothing happen. I mean, we, I don't know what else to say other than this is very challenging to be in healthcare right now and experiencing this. And I think it's easy for the, the easiest path of least resistance is normalcy. I want normalcy. Everybody wants normalcy. And you see in all the community that people want that. So is it, are you aware of the situation that's going on in our community that we have an increasing rate of people getting COVID? Is it, are you aware that, I don't know if it's, you are aware, but I'm going to do my thing, or maybe I'm aware and I'm going to change my behavior. So I think there is some common ground that we can come together as a board to try to, if it's not masking, looking at the quarantine. And last year, again, we didn't have the quarantine that when we had quarantine, a lot of those kids didn't get sick. But what were we doing last year? We were masking.
But there's no, there is no definite proof that the masking is what prevented it. There's data that will support you, there's data that will support me. There's really, I mean, we could sit here and go back and forth about whose data is accurate. If any one of us can find the data to support the position that we hold.
I agree.
So the one thing is that we do, that last year, we quarantined a lot of students who didn't need to be quarantined. And we, those students lost a lot of in-person instruction because of those quarantine rules. I don't want to do that again.
So I'm just, the option is to just allow the cases to go unmitigated? Is that what you're proposing, to just let the dice roll where they may use, without any intervention whatsoever from the board as far as helping and guidance?
Right now, the statewide numbers are doubling every week.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that it's not, I'm not a medical professional. I'm here to support my constituents. That's my role. That's what I'm doing. The majority of my constituents is based on the behavior that I witness in the community.
You don't put out because you're quite quiet.
Please.
I think, you know, my position is, and my role is, as school board members, is best for kids.
That is absolutely a part of it, but our job is to represent our constituents. That is absolutely a part of it, but our job is to represent our constituents. They are who, they are who elected us.
Still have to do what's best for them.
What's best for kids is the piece of that, absolutely.
Are there thoughts from other board members regarding the discussion?
I guess the quarantine piece, I'm not totally opposed to that. But I would want there to be a lot more analysis around who is quarantined. I think the cat, then that was maybe cast too wide and too many kids missed school that maybe didn't necessarily need to. So are there effective ways to be excluded from quarantine? If a student maybe has had COVID in a period of time prior to potentially being exposed? If a student has a vaccination, they wouldn't be subject to quarantine? Is there a way we can sort of tighten up how we identify who was actually a close contact? I've had a number of personal experiences of what was considered a close contact, but isn't, wasn't actually a close contact. And so then that takes kids out of school. And if our goal is to keep kids in person and we want to implement some sort of mitigation strategies, then we have to be highly analytical and really diligent and hold ourselves very accountable to how we're going to implement those fairly to keep as many kids in the class room as possible.
What area have we? Mr. Covington, I know that some of the other districts are looking at different communication strategies and different levels of spread to make those decisions. Do you want to share with us what you?
I've shared with you the Delano, the Delano matrix, which is being distributed pretty region-wide, which has the percentages and what they would, where they put those strategies in place. Is that, is that your curriculum referencing plan?
Yeah, and I know that you've been in contact with a lot of other districts besides them.
Yep, I have. We meet regionally every week and the topic discussion everyone is always called. At this time, there are, there's two districts that are masking right now and then Spirit Well knows where to tell us about it. And then there are, I don't want to reveal them, but there's six of them in our region that are considering further mitigation strategies which includes masks and one that is not.
What other mitigation strategies are they?
Quarantine.
What does that mean? Under what criteria? What, what circumstances? What data are they using? What measurements?
A lot of them are looking at the Delano matrix.
Can you remind me?
Yeah, so at less than 1% full transmission, no recommended face coverings, moderate transmission is wide, 2.9%. That's where they would share the communication about the level of transmission and request that staff and students wear the face covering. So that's 1 to 2.9%. At 3 to 4.9% masks would be required in the respective building for 14 days. After that period, the requirement ends when transmission falls below 3%. And then at 5% or above, face coverings would be required for all students and staff in the district. That seems to be the plan that's getting a lot of.
Talked about the quarantine.
That I can't, I can't speak to that specifically. Just like quarantine is being discussed. There's no major for quarantine that districts are.
Is this percent, percent of positive reported cases or percent of students that are in the building?
This would be percent of the positive cases.
Positive reported cases. Okay.
Jennifer, to answer one of your questions, there are specific ways to avoid quarantine. Again, family or personal choice is one's vaccination, vaccination. It does kick, does not, I'm sorry, allows you not to be quarantined. Masking does, does allow you to not be quarantined if it's a, let's say if you're in a class in English 9 and all the kids are wearing masks, then you would not be quarantined if the close contact was in that class.
These are based on?
This is based on the recommendations, best practices from the Minnesota Department of Public Education.
What if you recently had COVID? What are the rules?
And there is also the, I think it's 90 days. Somewhat till last year, if you had COVID.
Within 90 days?
Within 90 days, you would not be quarantined. I don't want anybody in the public to say that we are, we are setting that. We want the others. Those are just options.
What about if somebody gets tested and they have the antibodies?
I assume that's very similar to being vaccinated. I'm not a doctor, but I think that's a better representation. It's the antibodies to prove. I'm guessing that's within that 90-day window.
Well, but the vaccination isn't the 90-day window.
It's true.
And you can still spread it if you're vaccinated.
That's true.
Is Delano, just because we're losing that as sort of our guideline for this discussion, are they implementing this by building a chance? Because we have multiple different buildings experiencing very different things.
Jennifer, I actually can't even tell you what Delano has implemented yet as a board member. As I can tell you, this is what they have been talking about and are considering implementing. I had to talk to Matt at Delano to see if it actually went through their protocol. Sorry about that.
In that matrix, I think it says masks required for all students and staff in that in the respective building for a minimum of 14 days for the substantial transmission rate, so then 3 to 4.9%. So it'd be very specific to that area.
Similar to our scowl, scowl session we did use last year.
Can you speak to the number of COVID cases that are happening and kind of the spread that's happening within our building? And if we've done contact tracing, do you have any of that narrative?
So first of all, I did hold the same data that you referenced earlier. We, right now, as of September 23rd, the Recor district is at 71 for transmission. That's the Wolsen data. So I think Jason mentioned that earlier. As of today.
Is that county there or district?
There is, it is county and district and it puts it side by side. I think that.
This is total population. This is not within just our students and staff.
No, yeah, this is the Recor, this is all of the zip codes within the.
Okay, so district wire.
Yes, district.
Yeah.
So as of today at 1 o'clock, we have 36 students who are positive throughout the district. And on Thursday of last week, which is our typical reporting date, we had 27. We have no staff right now that are positive. Majority of our students that are positive are currently at the secondary building.
So when students are testing positive, are we doing, are we able to still do contact tracing?
Yep, we are doing contact tracing. And then those quarantine notices, those post-contact letters go out and then it says students then can make their decision.
Are we, okay, how are we, how are we evaluating that? Because I've gotten some discrepancies and notices that have been sent out to kids that were in the same space, some getting notices, some not.
If it's been in a classroom, we've been sending it to the entire classroom. I'm surprised we're not. That'd be the first I heard that.
I guess that's my point. We're sending it to the whole classroom?
Yep.
Sometimes we've had some teams also, our activities that.
Right, that, I've specifically had firsthand knowledge of discrepancies in notices going to teams and close contact. So I think if we're going to put these types of measurements in place and we're going to have specific rules around who has to quarantine and who doesn't, we've got to know what we're doing. And we've got to be accurate in what we're sending out and what data we're using. And we've got to make sure that we're not issuing those notices inconsistently.
Kind of going back to my line of questioning, I guess I'm just trying to, I understand if the spread or the positive, the COVID cases are happening due to spread inside of the school district. Obviously, we can't know that 100% certainly, but last year, we had somewhat of an understanding of the spread that was happening. Either they were coming in and testing positive because a family member had it and it wasn't spreading within the classroom. Do we know if the spread is happening within our walls or are students just coming in with positive results? Or is that not something we understand?
No, I think early on, it was a family explosion. But recently, we've been analyzing class lists and receiving charts and we're seeing multiple students in classrooms with, and multiple positives. So we're seeing, depending on the size of their class, two to three students are positive. They're sitting sometimes close to each other and sometimes not. So where do they, where do they, where do they, where do they see? Do they see each other at lunch? Do they see each other in hallway?
Or do they see each other at a party on Saturday or getting together on the weekend or in the evenings that we're not going to prevent?
Here, here's my, I guess, philosophical stance. I think to Jason's point, this has been tremendously difficult here. I can see from my, my friends here, my colleagues, that it's, these decisions weigh on, and it weighs on me. And we think about it a lot. It's personal. And I fall asleep sometimes and I think about it and wake up and I think about it. But ultimately, my goal is to do what's best for kids. And to me, what's best for kids is that they're in school in person. And all of their decisions revolve around that. I am also concerned that we're asking students, if we're asking students to mask, we're asking our students to do something that our community isn't. I'm not masked today and it's a decision I made because I'm fully vaccinated. And I feel, I'm not just symptomatic, so I feel comfortable about masking. And that's my personal decision that I've made for myself. But I don't want to ask students to do something that, to take on a burden that somebody, that the larger community isn't taking on. And so that's my philosophical stance. If we're starting to see huge amounts of spread that's happening in the schools and we really know what's happening within the schools, they're not going to a party or they're not, you know, going to the supermarket and catching it there and it's happening within our, in our walls. And because of that, we're getting a lot of kids out of school because they're sick. Then to me, that that's when we would want to have a really buttoned-up approach as far as what does it mean to be a close contact? And what does it mean, you know, what are the, what's the, I guess, matrix or decision tree that for, you know, it's complicated? I just, I understand where you're coming from, Jason, and I understand the toll and the personal toll that it takes on you and your role as your, for your job. I'm just really hesitant to ask kids to do something that we're not doing as a community. It's a bigger public health problem to solve than it is just a Recor issue. But, and with the information that we have right now, which is good information, but it's limited, I just, I don't feel comfortable moving towards an overarching strategy.
It feels sweeping in my mind. I think I always, when I see, you know, process and I always go straight to practice. Like, how are we actually going to manage this? Do it in an effective and data-driven way, right? How are we actually going to manage it? I guess my, my question is, should we implement some type of mask mandate at any time? Students come to school without a mask, what is our, in practice, what is the next step?
So if masking was a policy?
Correct. What are we going to do if many, many students come to school not wearing a mask?
Well, I think, I think last year, we had really good luck with gentle pressure technique, which is, you know, we asked the case to do it. And, you know, 99% of the students who are asked to do something by their trusted adults didn't want to do it. If there's not, then we have to, we have to, you know, use our policy and we have to, you know, have consequences. But I have high expectations for Recor students that should they be asked to mask, they would do it. They might not like it, but I think they would do it.
I think we're in a different position now than we were in last year because masks were mandated everywhere we went. And so students were likely, were more likely to follow those rules because they were the rules everywhere. I think you're going to get potentially students to say, wait a minute, this, this isn't how it's working anymore, so why is it working this way?
And I don't think last year is this year. I'll just make that just.
Where students go, students, if they're working in some businesses locally, they're having to wear a work. Most of, we have not at our place, but almost all of the other fast food places I've gone through lately, they're all requiring their employees to mask. I shopped at Target yesterday, they're requiring their employees to mask. So it's not like there aren't places in the community that are requiring masks and students are, some of our students that would work in places like that are calling them. And I have to say that just being in the community over the past several weeks and seeing the numbers increase, I am seeing more community members masking that are coming to my business. For a while, they were very few and now we'll probably have to a third or more.
It's a matter of choice and they're choosing to do that. And I think that's what we should understand, the choice of the parents.
The question is, do we get to a point where the spread would be so great that we're endangering a lot of people that we want to, not that we want to take away choice, but we want to do what we can to protect people? And where are we at with that?
I think the learning model was a good distinction, like a kind of a point of perhaps needing to reconvene because it could be a learning model. I mean, we can anticipate all the different scenarios that may or may not even happen. So using the data potentially we actually have, we'll potentially upbuilding a very level, name your situation, that maybe the board comes back together and we decide what we're going to do about that particular situation or we give Mr. Covington the authority to do that.
My concern is that right now, you know, statewide, certain areas is doubling each week. So in two weeks' time, we feel we have another board meeting.
Right. I guess my point is the experience from, from building to building just within our district is very different. So that's why I need the brushes of all of them to broaden.
I would agree that, you know, we can do it at a targeted level. The numbers increase in the classroom, the building or activity.
Of our, of our 36 positives, are they all concentrated in one area? Are they all secondary, all elementary? Are they across the board? Are they in one building? Are they across all buildings?
So as of today, we have 57 told cases since December, February, August. Currently, 36, 26 of those are in the secondary, that's 6 through 12. We did make.
What will that?
I'm sorry.
26 secondary, 6 through 12. What percentage? How many students are in 6 through 12?
917, so that turns out to be. Sorry, my Olivia math isn't that good.
2.8%.
2.8%. One of, one of our activities is where, one of our activities is where a third of our high school students are and that activity has been on hiatus. And I did that outside of the authority, but it would need to be done.
So one third of our secondary positives are from one activity and that activity has been put on?
That activity's on.
Okay. I guess this is sort of getting a little bit to my point of using this kind of approach. Okay, so, and then what about the other buildings?
We have four positives at CSE, two at Richmond, three at John Clark, and one at TDF. So 10 total.
Four at CSE, two--
Richmond, three, John Clark, and one here at TDF. So again, 10, 10 students at the H level where they can't be vaccinated.
Yeah, that's interesting, isn't it?
But also remember that they're co-horted. You know, they don't move throughout the buildings. They don't cross over each other.
How many students are at each of those buildings, CSE?
Five. I have that on, hold on. Just under, ah, it was just under-- Holly, how did I forget your awesome chart that gives me every week? I have the totals, I just don't have it built out, I'm sorry.
That's okay, but I think this is a good exercise.
Thank you, Sam. It's about--
Total, elementary, 842. CSE, 568. JSE, 135. Richmond, 135.
Okay, so CSE is at?
0.7%.
And the way we're keeping in place one of the mitigation strategies, last year, we didn't allow those students to interact with other classrooms. It sounds like we're still continuing that.
Not completely, not completely, but close.
So CSE is for sure the lowest.
CSE is 0.7, Richmond is 1.4. John Clark is--
It's 2%.
2%?
Yep.
On the other hand, if all four of those cases in one of the buildings were being in one classroom, they, that would change the dynamic of the situation too.
Again, that's where, that's where, you know, the recommendations have been. At Scalpel Coach, if we had four students that were positive in, for example, a secondary classroom, CSE, I think we would, I think everybody here would recognize that that's a potential spread within that classroom, and those kids probably wouldn't want it, right? And that's what we've been talking about, more than two cases is a trend.
Do we know if any of the cases within buildings are missing families? Specifically, like our secondary? With 26 secondary students resulting in 2.8% of the overall student body, how many of them are family members?
So at the, at the secondary, we currently have 17 students quarantined. So of those 26 students, there's also 17 siblings that are quarantined.
But no siblings both tested positive?
We do have, where there are multiple, where siblings have tested.
Yes, I picked up one as well.
So again, we don't know if those, if it started in the family, and-- There's just a lot--
No, no.
That's true.
So I think we've had some good discussion. I think it's important that we at least consider this resolution tonight so that we have some mitigation opportunity for Mr. Covington to address these issues as they're coming up. At this point, it doesn't have the mask component. And I don't know if there's enough support on the board to do that. I guess I would just admit that we would at least do the resolution as proposed.
I think it's a good start. I mean, there's no sense of finality here either. I mean, this resolution, we change it anytime by the consensus of the board, is that correct?
Yeah.
And we can change it?
This, this is some of the strategies that I think are options for Mr. Covington that, besides masks, would be the greater than two options. You know, some of quarantining in those environments you just described.
All due respect, I appreciate the authority. I would want to make sure that I have the consensus that, you know, quarantining is the best option at this time. I would want to make sure that the six of you are behind that. I still don't want to be alone, I don't know.
That's fair, absolutely fair.
I would make the motion to approve the resolution as proposed.
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, this is a resolution, a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The resolution passes unanimously?
Can we just go over exactly, I think, for clarity? So this, this resolution, just not to be confused, is just giving, delegating authority? So Mr. Covington can make decisions as needed.
I think Carrie, right, the prime example was with tennis. We just had to do something.
So, but we did not delegate responsibility on masks.
Correct.
So that's one decision that we're not authorizing you to make. I just want people to understand.
But Laura, you're taking the right to make that decision. Is that as part of the resolution?
Correct. And you're looking for quarantine-- You're looking from a direction from outside of quarantining, correct?
Yes, that is incorrect.
So, I mean, my philosophy is, what's best for kids is that they're in school. And so I'm really concerned about making, I mean, my kids were quarantined so many times last year, and it was not, wasn't good for them. And I, I just feel like we have to have such a nuanced approach. And it's complicated for you, but I just don't want to see sweeping quarantines.
Right, and like, at the decision level of like, coming up with the strategies, like, is that the emergency planning team that's doing this? Or you, or your administrative team, or like, is there a way we can help? I mean, I have a lot of thoughts on how to analytically approach this in a way that it affects the smallest number of people possible with some data to support it.
We could bring the EPT team back. It was now required going forward, coming into this year. So what we've seen tonight, or what you've seen previously, has been discussed administratively, but we could bring the EPT team back.
Or is it--
No, that's a huge team.
It was a huge team.
Or they're self-admitted and just to help each other. And Matt should be part of that.
Matt, Tracy, our school nurse.
And I think, you know, I see some opportunity, again, you included two, you know, when students are vaccinated, or if they're wearing a mask, and they wouldn't have to quarantine based upon the rules. So I don't know, it's a tricky logistical challenge. But I think, you know, if there was some way in attendance in classrooms, and I guess I'm just trying to brainstorm, I don't know if it's the solution, but maybe that's to that group, that's an idea as far as adding that kind of system so that we're not quarantining people that don't need to be quarantined.
I would also want us to work at including people who have the antibodies, natural, we're going to include those that are vaccinated, we should be including also have natural immune.
Yep.
Any other discussion, I guess, at this point? Okay, we're good to move on to the next item then, which is a paraprofessional master agreement. So they have ratified their agreement?
Yes, SCIU 284 informed me that they have ratified their contract offered from the district. And I, again, want to say thank you to both sides, both the board side and SCIU's side for really very good negotiations. Three meetings we accomplished, three weeks, it was amazing. So again, thank you to Jennifer Manzoni for all of your time.
Oh, there's a motion to--
Motion by Sunny to approve the contract. Second. Second by Chuck, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the contract is approved. Discussion items, item seven, Aid Equity Inclusion Action Update. Again, the outside firm, the school board of retained investigative issue is continuing to conduct its investigation. It's ongoing, and individuals would be contacted to participate. Firm estimates that this should be completed again sometime shortly after the beginning of the school year. So nothing has changed at this point, but hopefully we are getting sooner to a resolution.
So we don't have any updated shortly, what shortly after the beginning of the school year means now that we're coming into the second month of the school year?
No, I can try and get a more definitive for next--
Or you can contact Steve if you'd like.
Yep, I understand that, but I think it's something that we should be trying to clarify for--
No, I-- Yes.
Items two through six, so I wanted to inform or let everybody know that the Policy Committee did need to review 10 policies. One of them was the bullying policy. And I wanted to be noted that there was a change to the bullying policy. And we took out, and I'm going to paraphrase this, we took out the kids will be kids part of the policy that was right up front. So I think that's a big change in the bullying policy that we can't just say, oh, kids are going to be kids. That was like one of the first paragraphs. And that came right out of the recommendation from Equity Leadership, was that's not strong enough for your bullying policy. That's actually what we need. And so we, as a policy committee tonight, in the first read, recommended to take that out. And then the strategies on how to consequence, those are still coming in. Yet we are still working on our handbook updates as far as that's concerned.
So this is, I'm close to finding, because I had some comments on--
Yeah, no, this is a first read, but we're jumping ahead. We're, if you're talking about policy.
Yeah, about the bullying policy.
Yeah, we're jumping ahead.
We have completed Recorri Proud at the secondary building. We're still working on the process for the community and the board, for the, I'm sorry, the elementary. Our focus groups are not complete at this time on our activities. I talked with Joel today. He should be ready for his reports that are due in October, and the last piece that council's up.
Item seven, B, Annual Policy Review. So policies that we tried to include and review were the ones that are required to be reviewed annually. We spent our energy focusing on that because the school year had started. Again, this is a first reading of all these policies, so that we'll come back for another reading. So this will have opportunity for community and board members to give feedback regarding these policies. So if we do have concerns, and we have gotten feedback again about the bullying component, please reach out to the administration to provide that so that we can review that in more detail at our next meeting. I do know that next month is Bullying Prevention Month, and we'll be having a presentation from some of our principals regarding bullying, some of their activities to help eliminate that. So anything else, Chuck, on these policies specifically?
No, just that the Recorri Proud community one, me and Jason are going to work on developing some kind of a format and process for that.
Yeah. Any other questions on the policy? Again, we're using the template, MSBA template, and then the policies also did get screening through the Equity Group. Administrative reports, item eight, A1, Enrollment.
Yeah, you saw the enrollment in your pack tonight. Again, two, or 2347. We had budgeted for 2318, so above budget in our enrollment. So that is always a good thing. And we only lost one student from September to October, so total. I mean, there was changes in all over, but the total effect was loss of one student. So in terms of, for month to month, with a stable enrollment, that's a very good thing.
I was just surprised that the number of students in 12th grade increased that much.
Yeah, that was, that was an online, in our ALC thing.
Okay.
We had put those in.
Because the numbers are nice, but I just was surprised. That's usually one of these students.
Speaking of online, we have 41 students that are currently online. We have taken in either three or four, I don't remember exactly from this afternoon's meeting, but three or four from other districts. So they, we talked about how to help some of our other local districts, area districts to come into our online. So we have an agreement with them on tuition agreement for that. So actually, some of them have, or I think one or two of them actually left their districts and enrolled with us, so. You saw the much comparison that had been reported. So that's always a, those are good, I encourage you to read those, it's a good report. Our SRA3, I put out SRA3 last week to our community. We got a couple responses. Both responses asked for more mental health support. So our SRA3 plan is going to be finished this week. And we'll be submitting that for the federal funds for SRA3. I wanted to give you an update on our task force application, which is due Wednesday at noon this week. If you're interested in being part of the Recorri task force, we currently have six staff that have applied, and five community members have applied. So again, push forward, getting some more applications. We're looking anywhere from 20 to 30 members to be a part of that task force.
And that's for long-term facilities?
That's the long-term facilities task force. So again, Wednesday at noon, there's application is on our website. I encourage you to go out and look at that and consider applying for it. Again, we have about six staff and five community, that's 11, and we're looking for 20 to 30, so.
That's the--
That's the number that we have current applications. But typically, again, it's like most people, they sometimes procrastinate. So I anticipate maybe after a number of people are watching tonight, we get a reminder that you want to be part of the long-term facilities here at Recorri. There's a process to do that.
I've spoken to a couple of people encouraging them to apply, and I'm, a lot of them are, first, like, didn't know about it, and are very excited and enthusiastic about it. I'm just curious how we've communicated the information about the task force, and if there's anything that we can do between now and noon on Wednesday to increase the applications.
It should be on the record tomorrow. That was just a, we have to submit it by Thursday before, I mean, we just didn't get submitted in time. It's the last week's paper, but we do it in the sixth paper. I sent it out to the all families message. I can send it out again tomorrow, just as a reminder.
Will we put anything on our Facebook?
It's on our website, so if it goes on our website, it goes, you know, Facebook.
Can you send it out as a reminder by itself, like, without any other message, or just that?
Certainly can.
And can we have, yeah, can we ask both of the building-- And can we have, yeah, can we ask both the building level and the district level for, I guess, a social media blast too?
Sam, was it in the smart letters last week too?
Hi.
So I did speak to a couple of people on Saturday, and they say, well, my wife gets those emails, I don't get those. So we have to remind people that share your information at home. It's fast as this thing. So yeah, so yeah, there's, I will do one more blast.
Awesome, thank you.
I think that's all I had to talk about. Maybe the stadium opening, oh, yes, leading to that, yeah, celebration. So we had the grand opening of Black Hammer Stadium on last Friday. We had a nice win, come from behind win against Apollo. And then we turned around and was going to hopefully have a second grand opening on Monday, but the weather didn't cooperate. But we did have a second grand opening last Friday night. We had doubleheader soccer against St. John's Prep. And we had a really, really nice crowd, both from St. John's Prep and from the Recorie side. So the kids got to experience a very similar event, not the same event, but very similar event. And so it was well attended, it was fun to be in. It was the first full soccer game I think ever since, so it was very interesting.
Yeah, very exciting to have that new addition to our facilities, so for lots of positives. Now you have to be able to celebrate positively.
We already had discussions on how it's already overscheduled the place right now. Especially today, it's already over scheduled, so.
Do we have any numbers on? Yeah, I was curious, how many do we think family were there?
I did ask that number. I can tell you that we had around 2,400 paid, that means tickets, and the online, but there were way more in total.
I mean, well, do we have a rough estimate of how many student passes or either student or family passes we have out? Because that could give us an idea of how many more people there were. Because you can add five from my family, and we didn't pay online.
We, again, you know, we gave a lot of number of free passes to the contractors and to the sponsors and those passes. So it's really hard to, alls I can give you is the data that I have, which is we had about 2,400 paid. It would just be a guess for the rest of it, but sure felt like a lot. And again, I was happy to see a similar, not a similar, but a really nice turnout for soccer.
That it then?
Yep.
Okay. Then we have our board committee reports. Jennifer?
The two that I report on is on September 6th, we had a Booster Club meeting. We went through some regular business at that meeting, but honestly, most of the discussion about the Booster Club meeting was preparing for the opening of the stadium and sort of some final arrangements. So, and then also I report on community ed. We have a quarterly meeting, most recently on September 15th. Just talked about sort of looking back at the summer and what the enrollment was. Looks like most of the programming we had over the summer was mostly in person, and it was well attended with a number of unique different opportunities. The summer childcare numbers were also up as well. Interesting, ECFE's numbers are almost to, almost exactly the same as they were in the fall of 2019, sort of pre-copital. That, I thought that was just an interesting fact. And then facility rentals and community users are very active, and the buildings are all of lots of activity. So that was the report on community ed. We meet again in December.
Chuck, the policy meeting, we pretty much talked about most of everything that we took out. And one thing I do want to add to that is the committee members did go through and look at some of the comments that were made through our, through the 30 policies that we received back. And we're quite pleased to see that a lot of the comments that after, of course, we made were very rough, that we had some new policies in mind. So that was sort of interesting. And the technology committee net, I showed up a little late, so if there isn't something, you may just jump in. But the biggest thing was surprise opening to, like getting all those smart board projectors. And he's thinking about demoing two different types of products, and then maybe doing some training with a couple of teachers to see how they like it. And then I'll see where that goes from there. Basically, he was really just getting back geared up, getting back to school, because this was the first of September. That was all good.
Lynn?
Okay, you saw the result of negotiations. We finalized, I think we wrote it on paraprofessional contract. We have now met with all of our other employee groups that are not unionized, and we also met with the principals who are at a union. We had listing sessions with the ones that are non-unioned. And we will be, our committee will be working on presentation back to them in the next two weeks. And we'll meet with those groups again, and then we'll continue negotiations with the principals. It's all going quite well. And okay, nothing happened catastrophically, and I was unable to attend the C meeting because I was unable to get away from it.
Beth and Sterns really didn't have a lot going on. I think the one thing, the termination of hearing loss procedures, the IEPs need to be renewed by December 1st just to see if there's any changes or things, services that need to happen. They are updating their Facebook, they gave four meeting confer dates, and then they had, we had a closed session about negotiations. So that was Beth and Sterns. No update regarding the state high school.
State High School, they did come out with an update that, believe it or not, they had to make a policy that if you did test positive, that you couldn't be in activities for 10 days. We, apparently, some schools, there are positive students to come back prior to the 10 days. And so they had to put a policy in place that says no, you have to follow the city treaty, that you have to be up for 10 days. So if you do test positive, you work with your Recorie coordinator, and you will be out from that activity for 10 days.
Carol?
Sterns, County Family Collective, who's the only community that met, but I was unable to go over to meet with.
If I was his kid, I was unable to attend that. But if they get a follow-up, what we did during the operations council passed through, we got a collective.
Sunny?
The only group that I report on was facilities and grounds. We met on the 15th for a regular meeting. We talked about a lot of things, and we'll see if I can do it justice if I'm here in New York. Well, Brad, you can help with the, or.
Yeah, I can help.
Okay, good. So we did have a brief conversation with Wold, that was, was he there? That day? Video conference. Yeah. Just to kind of make sure that we continue moving forward with work that needed to be done for the task force. There is a tour scheduled for the committee to look at some different building options. There's been discussion on property or land acquisition. We had some discussion on issues with open positions or vacancies and trying to come up with some creative ways to fill some of the staffing needs in the facilities and grounds area. Talking about a punch list for some of the issues related to the parking lot repairs, recircusing, as well as the punch list of additional items with completing the multi-purpose complex, Black Hammer Stadium. Yeah. We talked about, we have some work to do on some elevators. Yes, issues with some elevators that recently came up.
And then one of the things that we've been talking about over in facilities and grounds is about being, including playground upgrades within our five-year plan, facilities plan. And so that had, money had been set aside, and it sounds like Coltsboro Elementary, they will be getting an upgrade for the larger system. And right now, we're getting proposals back from a couple of, but this is, this is a big deal, so our committee will make a big impact, so.
I think that very much covers what's on this list. Our next meeting, while we, a small group of us will meet on Wednesday to go through the task force committee applicants and make those decisions at the end of the day.
And then just to report back to the board, we did share with Wold that it's important to us, we're going to assume that we have a ton of applicants for the task force and that we will be able to have everybody. And so we shared with Wold that we would really, that we want to for sure have a, I don't know what the right term is, but.
Ellicis.
Ellicis. Yeah, and it would be either, there'd be a big comprise of one or two meetings with all of the individuals who apply that aren't able to make, that don't make it. So they were very knowledgeable to that. Had some good suggestions on timing.
All right, and I think that's it for reports. And then upcoming events and activities. Facilities and grounds will be meeting on Wednesday. And then it looks like policy will be meeting on the 6th, along with the technology on the 6th. Going forward, it sounds like we'll probably be having our board meetings in this space because of the play this fall. They will be using that space, the auditorium space. So we will likely be meeting here until that is completed or available. So look to that, just make sure you're watching your meeting or agendas to know the location of the, or bi-weekly board meetings. So that should likely be here. And then negotiations is on the 12th. And some, the Lee banquet resource training award is on 13th, and that'll be a nice event. Negotiations for directors is coming up soon.
Chair, one of the things that's not on the, in the upcoming is teaching and learning committee will meet at October 11th at 5:30. Prior to the board meeting, I don't know what I said on here, I missed putting it on there, but we do have a teaching and learning at 5:30. The other meeting that will be probably here is, we can put that meeting somewhere here that will be nice, so that people don't have to travel from one building to the next.
Okay.
Holly, I'll put you to get a meeting space, we'll be here for that.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned.